So, I just got some feedback for that. Yes. Uh, we can't space. What's? Forces. Oh, uh, yeah. So. Uh. Uh, actually, uh. Uh. Stop. And. Right. Okay. Uh. Uh. S. 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 Uh. S. S. Check. All over there. Uh. Uh. Uh, so. It's. That's. She. When check this. She. She. Uh. It's. What? She. Uh.
And I went up. My father's. Dad. Was raised at ten twenty six. East Mariner. So that house is still there. And I'm still. Stand. I've got the box of shit. I don't want to see it. I don't want to see it. Thank you so much. I want you all to read. Each paragraph everybody. And. She don't. I'm not. I'm staying on. Uh. I can't. Okay, she might. Stay. I mean. And that's. That's a bad thing. Of. And. Look up. What? And it's just that. Definitely. Up. It's. How? Something. In fact. So. You saying what I'm saying. And also. So. Yeah. Yeah. Uh. She. She. I think it's. I know the. Yeah. So. He did it. Uh. Sorry. There was. That's. See. And getting that very surface. He felt. Right? Let's do it. Thank you. We. Ready to work. It's just. I think we know. So. Yes. Come. The chief.
Wouldn't see a flame. Despite. The word that is familiar in political rings that just because you support us, don't mean we're gonna support you. Which means that even though. When somebody comes up with an idea to stabilize the waterfront. And zero bound all to stabilize the waterfront. Dan Keely told me it could be done. The C O F at that time of the city of Flint said it could be done. And nobody even put it on the phone. So, yeah, I wanna put it on the phone. That's why I'm running. And another reason why I'm running. Because it's time out. For shade. Our city, this neighborhood, this poor. This city, cuz, yeah, I'm born and raised in the third ward. But I've been in the sixth. I've been in the sixth. I've been in the seventh. I've been in the eighth. I've been in the third. I've been in the second. Been all over this city. And. I don't like what I see. I see a lot of grass and dirt. They used to be beautiful homes. They had beautiful people living inside of them. That's why I'm running. Because we need somebody to stand up for our city. And stop our wrongs from going to land. We need somebody that gonna put it on the floor. That's we have these houses. It's better to have a house than somebody jumped in and victimized you toward your side house and stole your only form of electricity and then talk about you. It's better to have one of those houses than all of this grass and dirt that I see and don't hear. I would rather have a house. That has been attached twice. During a political campaign. Versus that grass and dirt that is all over our city. And I also wanna do something about that. I wanna bring some affordable houses that right now ain't being available because those departments don't provide. I'm good. You don't got to worry. Thank you. I get it.
Alright, thank you, Richard. Alright, so there are a few different categories we'll be asking, asking questions from. Crime, life, economic development, um. Water crisis, and, yeah, those four. So, we need to go into started. Oh, I'm sorry. I'm gonna. You have a special guest moderator. I'm sorry. I'm gonna be, uh, come on. My daughter's gonna be asking me ask questions up here. Um, so.
Hi, everyone. My name's Sandy Platt. Um, so the first question is crime prevention strategies. The third ward is Flint's largest ward by land area. Making a challenge. You don't, you aren't gonna. The third ward is Flint's largest ward by land area. Making a challenge through these affected. What specific strategies would you implement to enhance public safety and reduce crime in our neighborhoods?
Mr. Jones. Okay, thank you. My. Um, the question was what would that mean to you?
Please.
My. I think your question, that's what I.
What specific strategies would you implement to enhance public safety and reduce crime in our neighborhoods?
Alright, well, first of all. Crime. Is the responsibility of the chief of police. First of all. I would push to get a police chief. Who is hard on crime. I would push to get a police chief that has a plan. About crime. When we had police chief Johnson, there was a plan. And crime went down. So, you know, as a councilperson, what they can do, we control the budget. We control the budget. And if you want to eliminate crime, you have to have a plan. And if you fail the plan, then plan to fail. And that's why we failed it down the third ward in this entire city. Because there is no plan. And I think we ought to hold those individuals, we ought to hold the mayor accountable. Cuz when our homeless vote. Part of government. Were equal with the mayor. We ought to hold the police chief accountable. And as council representative, we hold the, we set the budgets. And we hold the purse. So, it's no magic wine how to reduce crime. But at least I can have a plan. And when you work with a plan, you have to work with a plan. But the city of Flint does not have a plan. Because a police chief has given us a plan even after many years. The Flint City Council especially. Uh, councilperson, county farmers have asked the police chief for a plan. And when he said, well, we got one, we'll use the one that we've been having. And crime is up.
First of all. I wanna thank my boy, Light Weezy. For bringing this up when I was talking to him about this crime because. I really didn't wanna give any of my support about it when it came to this, but I will say this. I would be at the last place. I would be at the last place. I would have at least four, five, six police cars in these parking lots. And I would stop people should be allowing themselves to beat theyself up in these parking lots. And I hate that I never exposed that to y'all. Because something that I do discuss with Chief Green, I will not disclose. But I will say that. And, um. Another thing. That I do. I'm encouraging these people to think of all the water they sell on these streets. Because. At the end of the day, police is called reaction. That mean we are reacting to someone's negative behavior. We gotta reach out. And stop creating so many people with so many negative behavior. And we need to write some kind of legislation banning these guns. And we need to create some kind of gun street zone in some part of this state. See, you want. We need to. So many. So many problems when it comes to crime. And our police force need new or more, we're gonna say more, we're gonna be bought. Our police force need more red lights. More brain surgery. We need more frank police on our streets. Thank you.
Okay, next question. Let's start this with Mr. Jones. Community policing and law enforcement relations. Any residents feel there's a disconnect between law enforcement and the community? How would you work to build strong relationships between the police and the third ward residents to improve trust and safety? Richard.
Visibly. You can't trust nobody you don't see. Or whenever you bump into one, it's a bad old thing. Be invisible. Can I understand that? Meet a man, get a bus stop in the morning, have a nice day. Ain't nobody gonna come around here through there. But. We got to have more Flint police. How many crimes have y'all seen in the city of Flint? That have four only Flint police cars there? If it's two or more car. Now, sometimes you may see two Flint police. But if it's three, you guarantee party, one police, one sheriff, one state. Most of the time when it's two, it's two state police. State police are state highway patrol. Why are they more than our stretch? More than our Flint police? But you can't kick nobody out if you ain't going to new places. Once again, the community need to see more police. And making the more the police interact with the community, they won't have such a negative talk behavior toward these kids. Because I made a beginning of grown up justice. And there are talk people. There are talk toward grasses. And they hate us and they arrest us. And I'm talking about some because the city of Flint police that I know, Mike Scott and Fox. Say, if I don't want to raise a senior flame, maybe we need to get more senior Flint police officers also back.
Well. Let me. You can ask questions. I mean, if you ask questions. I don't know. Well, let me see this one. Uh. Community police. Years ago, it was called the Foot Patrol. I remember Terry Green. Yeah, I remember she was, she was one of the ones that involved in the Foot Patrol. The Stevens, normal Stevens. Barfers Stevens. They live right in the third ward. So, the many, uh, policing is definitely new. But to say, you know, what my dad used to tell me, I said, Dad, we need to do this, this, this. And he would say, well, son, how you gonna pay them? It's good to have grand ideas. But talk is cheap. It takes money to buy money. How are we going to pay for the tax? I mean, the, the police. You have business leading Flint. We have more businesses getting tax breaks. So how are they going? See, when you're a homeowner, I mean, y'all pay taxes, property taxes, and it's crazy handy. When you're a homeowner, you understand. Whether you own a home, don't live in a home, or don't live in the, in, in the community. You don't understand. And to put the burden of more police, it costs more tax. And we need more businesses. The other way to have more police. Community policing. We need to get a tax break. And quit getting all the files on one C three. Uh, crooked organizations to our tax dollars. And put our tax dollars where they're counted. For people.
Thank you. Thank you. So the next question is centered around youth engagement and crime reduction. A significant portion of crime involves young people. What initiatives do you support to provide that risk user with alternatives to crime such as job training, mentorship, or recreational programs?
Well, it's without old folk committing crime too. See, we just wanna put it on the young folk. It's without an old folk committing crime. It's a crime when you fill out an affidavit and swear under oath and lie on an affidavit that you're a resident of the third ward, which y'all, that's a crime. So y'all wanna, so y'all, y'all wanna do, let's get real. That's a crime. I challenge Mr. Jones. Because Mr. Jones said in the Flint City Council that he does not live where he said he lives. That is a crime. That is a felony. Those was his words and not my words. And so, if you want, uh, you have to see examples. More is taught than taught. You have to be an example. If you say something, cause see, uh, children and, and, and young folk, they're very particular, I know about that one. They don't see, able to see not what you say, but what you do. They follow your example. And how can you talk about crime? And you commit crime? I, I have no friends that are more, no finisher. We come here to hear the truth. And it's wrong to run with options, don't live in the board where you say you live. That is wrong. Brothers, the first ward or the third ward? Yeah.
Okay. Again, this crime, this question is centered around youth engagement and crime reduction. A significant portion of crime involves young people. What, what initiatives would you support to provide that risk user with alternatives to crime such as job training, mentorship, or recreational programs?
Well. I support. A couple of programs to where, I don't know the names of them, but one of them is right here in the I C M on Tuesday, Mr. Dante. And I talked to some of the young men on the slide. If I find a young man needing the services that he offers, I would introduce him to that and a lot. And also, I'm impressed that he also started a not great basketball team. Trying to use that and some of some kids a little way. And also, and doing, uh, Flint Kids Matter March on, uh, June twenty first. And at that meeting, I'm gonna have people like Dante, parents trying to group connect. Cause it is a lot of organizations out there that are working with kids and stuff like that. And also, finally trying to hook them up and connect to some of these organizations that have jobs, some of the jobs for these kids. So maybe they can get together and. Help keep these kids off the street. Maybe we can get some more communication. But, uh, and in, and in the meantime, if anybody else is doing anything positive with all the kids, I'm always there to support. I, I never, all I just do is answer somebody. I, 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 my, my motto is, if it's good for Flint, I don't care who behind it, I mean. I mean, real talk. You can be a composed person that has a title and stand by and just watch I C M get doggone better. Like a young man, then shout in the back and I say a word. You can do, you can do things, you can do things like that. But if you have some water drops, guess what? I'm gonna be right there with you. Helping you pour water in there. You know? That's my motto, just to keep it real. Whatever good for the city of Flint. I don't care how much you hide it. You lie there all you want to. If you do something that's good for the city of Flint, I'm gonna stand with you. But a lot of people in our city. They ain't, they got, if I ain't in front of the counter. If my organization ain't there, bitch, I ain't there. And that's why our city can't go nowhere. But. One good thing about our city. And it's a bad thing too. Eighty-nine percent of the population. So we can get twenty percent of those non-informed to get informed and get. and give upon real candidates, that way I won't become the next everybody to have to run nineteen times before they follow their assistance and vote for the person that they see. Thank you. Hopefully that ends our bad sense.
Thank you. So the next question is about gun violence and illegal firearms. Gun violence remains a major concern in the city. What policies or practices would you advocate for to address the presence of illegal firearms and prevent violent crime in the third ward?
Man, that's a great question. And I ain't going to lie, we have a serious problem. That we need to have meetings that discuss. All we want to do is really get rid of guns. How many of y'all know of the Ghost Gun? Can we talk about that? How do y'all get rid of the Ghost Gun? We really need to get together and get rid of the Ghost Gun. And guess why we need to get rid of the Ghost Gun? The old gun that these kids are making.
What is a Ghost Gun?
A gun that they are orbiting parts from, on the end of it, whatever, put together and walk around here doing a make. So that's, so I don't need to start the conversation. Because that's something that needs to be done. And then after that, I'm just going to continue to do what I do and I hope everybody else out here trying to turn this life, continue to do what they do. And hopefully we can get through everybody here to where they stop creating these kinds of crimes. If, I'm here so many people that's fed up, that's fed up. And I'm talking about people that vicious in the street, serve crime. But they are fed up with innocent children and parents that been, that been on your name and losing their life. And the lack of movement, the lack of movement. Just imagine if this was the good old days. When it go everywhere, it was full of black businesses. With this type of behavior, they could, we couldn't be functioning up without things like that.
Let me say this. If legislation is already over, brothers, there's ordinances, there's state legislation, and they're peppered about guns. You just, it's illegal just to run, walk around with an unlicensed gun. You have to follow what the law says. And criminals do not follow what the law says. And you have, there's nothing you can do to eradicate illegal firearms, guns, nothing. If you could do it, it would already been done. You could have a bi-hack program, you know who's turning their guns? Some local reckless citizens and turning in some old guns that they have, that's what they're trying to do. Like the criminals are going down there and turning their guns. It's nonsense, ludicrous. We are legislators. We create the law. And it's up to the administration or the executive branch to put the law into effect. We create law. And so, I see councilwoman Barnes here, and I know there's laws and ordinances already on the board. The body, the child. They're there. And the criminal goes in there. So again, I say that there's nothing you can do but have the police and administration to enforce the laws that are already under the board. And create another law, I'm going to say it on, the whole city of Flint is a safe town. According to the ordinances, the state law and federal law. Thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move on to the next topic, which is economic development related questions. So the first question is relating to attracting businesses. The third ward has, has significant land area but lacks major economic investments. What steps would you take to attract businesses, create jobs, and stimulate economic growth forward?
Well, first of all, if businesses are going to come to Flint, if your school district is not enough a part. When businesses move their families or come to Flint, first thing they need to add is a good school district. And do you know in the third ward, there is not one public school in the third ward? No, not one. There is not one private school in the third ward. So what business would want to come to the third ward or the city of Flint, where there are no schools, or the schools are subsstandard? Another thing, businesses do not like to come to a community where crime is high. And Flint has one of the highest crime rates in the state of Michigan, right here in the city of Flint. So when we talk about economic development, first of all, you have to have great schools. Community school, neighborhood school, crime activity below. And another thing is that businesses, when they come, they come with a handout. And what you have to do, like John, uh, John, just, John Kennedy said, ask not what your country can do for you, but ask what you can do for your country. So we ought to ask these businesses, uh, ask not, uh, what we can do for you, but what can you do for us? When they come, they want something, they want some handouts. And guess what the shoulder of the handouts? The taxpayers, again and again. And who has the least, uh, uh, resources to pay taxes? Senior citizens? I'm finished? You waving white flag, you need to surrender.
Right now, I'm interested in finding out when they're going to get down to this building worksite. Where are they at towards this building worksite? What kind of plan are they planning on getting there? And what will be the qualifications? So we can start getting some of our youngsters together, and hopefully they can take some of those three thousand dollars that was voted on. And I will not give in to another corporation that comes in and tells us, we're finna give you three thousand jobs. And then, after you give them a seventy-two million dollar taxpayer payment, they come back and tell you, oh, we need that to clean up, not, that's what they did. They came back and said they need a seventy-two million dollar taxpayer to clean up that building worksite. So they gotta clean that up, then they gotta build the site. And then the building gotta come there, then the three thousand jobs. Conversation should have been, we gotta clean this up, we gotta build, then we gotta three thousand jobs. But in twenty twenty-one, we're going to want three thousand jobs. There will be no more conversations with me, with me on that, on that council meeting coming to the city right there. And then, of course, people have to do what you, what you're gonna do for us, because I, I forgot what it's called. But it's some kind of agreement between the company and the city where they have to look something for the city when they want to bring the business here. So that's the, that's the first thing. And immediately, I would just like to talk, because we got a lot of bright minds in our city that want to open up youth clubs, that some of them might want to get a marijuana business, some of them want to open up stores, right here in the city. And maybe we can create some kind of agreement to where, I would, I would say this, it's better to make a living every day in a quarter every room, in other words, charge them a little bit less unless a black business is opening up in our city.
Okay, this next question is centered on supporting small businesses and entrepreneurs. Many small business owners complain struggling with funding, resources, and retention. How would you support local businesses and small businesses to help them thrive in the future?
Well, you know what? I'm pleased to say that I was once a small business in the city of Flint. And I brought my documentation from Laura. I own Ace Demolition. And I had this contract to tear down houses under the late Woodrow Stanley demolition contractor. And you can look it up under Laura, the other, Ace Demolition, and my name's on the top of it. So I understand small businesses. And one thing I understand about small businesses, it's difficult, because when you have small businesses, you're talking about insurance. We ain't hiring insurance than big businesses. When you talk about small businesses, bonding, do you know black businesses, small, they cannot even get bonded? Whereas, you have capital, asking capital, they can get bonded. But the contractors, the black contractors that I've forged with, uh, Pat, uh, Pat O'Aschel, talking about community engagement, as, uh, Councilperson Broner said, to tell that they need to hire black contractors. And they did. Those are small businesses. And also, it turns about hiring contractors from the city of Flint, small contractors from the city of Flint, and they did. So if you want, uh, small businesses, you have to make it very, very easy for them. As legislators, we can tell the city court, when it's talking about fees, dollars coming off in the budget, fees, the lower the fees, make it easy, thank you.
Well, I just said this one. We need more businesses with less red tape and less taxes. It's better to charge a lot of people a little bit than a couple of people a lot. So yes, we need to cut the red tape, make it easier for businesses to operate, as in us. Because it's supposed to be business to operate every day, because we love that, not being about us. So we need to think about how to help our own. And to be successful, we need to think export. We need to think export. It's possible to run it up dealing with Flint. But it's very good when you got something to ship it out. That's a lot more opportunities when you ship off aside, just concentrate in Flint, thank you.
Okay, so we're going to move to utilizing land, vacant land, and building. The third ward has a high number of vacant properties and empty lots. How would you work to repurpose these spaces for economic development, such as new housing, commercial development, or community projects?
Well, first of all, the green space.
Thank you.
Remember the green space? Remember when they put the orders together, that you couldn't build? Do you know if my house burned down today, or your home? You couldn't build in that same place where it burned down? That's because legislated, council members blew it. Only thing they do tonight are parks. That's the truth. So you have to know what you know. The green space, y'all remember the green space? How wonderful it's going to be? We can't even build houses. They do have a subdivision that's been in the third ward for twenty years, that was being a developer. They're finishing up that. But you cannot build in the city of Flint, because of ordinances that councilpersons have. Green space, everything now is green space. That's terrible. So, you know, we have to change the ordinances, number one. Now, you know, we got stuff on it, but we need to change these ordinances. We're not going to build, you know, they have affordable apartments at two thousand dollars a month. Affordable apartments. I'd lie not, they're building them up everywhere you see, affordable apartments. Sister, uh, uh, the queen of the sixth ward got some affordable apartments coming up in our ward. All over the city, but what affordable apartments in the third ward? They got some in the fifth ward, but those are not homes, we need the homes. We need homes. You paying fourteen hundred dollars a month, and that's subsidy, thank you.
We in a serious role. I remember a time when a lot of this grass and dirt was home. And I really wish that we would have maintained what was going on. And we got a lot of people in our city that don't have problems for law. Ain't been, they've been doing, doing, they've been doing them well. Paying five, eight hundred dollars a month for rent, see? I really wish we could have rehoused one of those homes and gave it to some of those people that may be having, you know, college debt, bad income deals, something like that. When it comes to keeping their roots over their head, with receipts, no problems, like here, I really wish we could help our city go on by transfer. But now, we got to even more seriously fight. Because we got to fight, but there's a lot of land and dirt. And for the next four years, they're going to be making more land and dirt throughout our city. But we got to fight to have homes built. And not only do we have to fight to get homes built, but we got to fight to get affordable homes built. So we got to fight on our hands, because if it's a plan for a wild, wild city that turns all these nice homes into this grass and dirt, okay?
Karen, so we're going to move into water crisis related questions. So the first one is ongoing water, excuse me, ongoing water contamination issues. Many residents in the third ward still report issues with their water quality. What immediate steps would you take to ensure all residents access completely safe drinking water?
That's a miracle, because it cost more than two hundred sixty-seven million dollars in a six-star hit situation. I wish, because like I said, now we will be going in the phase two where they're changing household and stuff, they got a couple of lines up. Something like that be in between finishing the first phase and the second phase. And the third phase is changing all of these uh, watering from what I see. Once again, we've been misled. How many people have their water line changed and still require a filter? Thank you all. When I was in the meeting, when they were talking about doing phase two, I asked a question. When phase two is done, will our water be tapable? And the answer is no. So the worst thing ever could have happened, and it did already happen, and it's going on eleven years. Pity anybody that wanted that water source. But we can't look at the past and see what we're gonna be looking like eleven years later. So the thing that I want to do, because I opted out of that settlement, I ain't opting. From day one, I said, "That's got enough money." No matter how many people said it was, you gotta get your own attorney. I can't wait till they give up, whatever they go to give up. And I don't understand why attorneys, because all of the attorney out and running all over this city. Because it's way more people like me that did not join in this conversation. So, thank you. Well, first of all, I want to salute former mayor Karen Williams Weaver. It was Dr. Weaver who did not have a vote, but she had a voice. And when the people connected her, the first thing on the top of her chin was to declare a water crisis, emergency water crisis in the city of Flint. And so Dr. Weaver, who's huge, and I didn't want to say that. It was the ordinary people like Art Woodson, Claire McFlinton, others that knew and was out there telling them that the water was bad. And I get honored to represent you. And I want to let you know, over seven hundred million dollars have come to the city of Flint for the water crisis. Not one red penny has been given to the residents of the city of Flint. But you know who got the money? Five oh one C. They got it. And you know who else? The J Ds, you know the J Ds are jurors and doctors, the lawyers. They got it. But what did they get? Absolutely nothing. And I'm gonna read this right here. Let's talk about the water crisis. I'm delighted that I was among the first with the NAACP when I served with NAACP. We were the first city of Flint branch unit to file a lawsuit against those who poisoned us. The NAACP, I was named one of the fine teachers in that lawsuit. I'm gonna speak. Brother Clay, can you give us just a little bit of, you know, we got two hours, a little, a little. Anyway, you know, don't know what's out there, police, if we don't. Okay, yeah, I didn't want to be out of order, I don't want to provoke. Okay, man, listen. I'd like to read this. M. Live, July thirteenth, twenty twenty-one. Flint residents ask judge to reject six hundred forty-one million water crisis settlement. This came from M. Live. AC Dewes Street asks fifteen Flint residents to address U.S. District Judge Judith Lee, stating their objection to the six hundred forty-one million dollar water crisis settlement. No question, AC Dewes, been out there all the time. Genesee County is helping to exonerate Genesee County on Tuesday the thirteenth down in Flint. After a three-day marital security this week, the judge must make a final decision whether the settlement of civil lawsuits by residents in the state of Michigan, city of Flint, Flint Regional Medical Center, and role professional service. But not only was I just one of fifteen, let me name those that were there. See, we have history, it's important. We have former mayor who testified. Uh, former mayor Karen Weaver Weaver, the late first board councilman Eric Mayes, community activist Chris Delmoni, activist Claire McFlinton, activist Andre, uh, Andre Yama, this is Mohammed, pastor Freeline Reddell, James Moore. He gave me a little. I got four more names, can I name the four more names? Thank you. I want to give an honor to Thomas Weaver. Jolena Freeman, Atreese Batiste, Deborah Holmes, Claudia Perkins-Yoak, Diane Fletcher, and the late Woodrow Stanley, the former mayor of the city of Flint, former councilman, former Genesee County Commissioner, and former state representative. Those were the individuals that testified about the water.
Thank you so much. So now we're going to move into water affordability and milling issues. Many Flint residents are saying they struggle with high water levels despite ongoing water quality concerns. What would residents choose supports to ensure fair and affordable water rates for residents?
But, uh, another one thing that's on my mind is that KWA law. And to be honest, if I'm gonna do something wrong at KWA law, that means the city of Flint will have to do something about that KWA law. But once again, if they didn't like the way it was, it wouldn't be like this. And that KWA law, the hill over our head, not mentioned to the either. So just to keep it a thousand people. If y'all really want something done with this city, y'all could have got a little bit more scare than what y'all doing because Ms. Claire, the head of the Toronto City Council, was elusive about how to help people get along with water bills. Nothing happened. Then the other residents that gone and suggested how to get help. And through the few contacts that I have had, because I know people that have hardships and they call me, and I turn them over to people who are that can get the help if they, if they are suffering and stuff like that. I would love to sit down with different parts of our state that has a sort of water race and discuss and bring to the table ways for our citizens to swim water. One thousand, if y'all ever want to draw water bills, I'd stand up to the man and they'd pay to find another way to get that KWA law. Thank you. Well, let me say this. For my water bill, no proof that I have anywhere I say I have. You know, my water bill. Well, how do you lower the water rates? First of all, the master fee schedule. Lower the water and sewer fee. Do away with it. If you don't pay one, if you don't use no water, you still got a forty-five dollars. Well, I, I don't have to guess, but I can live in that bill. You have a forty-five dollar service charge for sewer. You, wait, wait, you scratched that. Twenty-eight for sewer, and then a water, twenty-eight, or just water service charge. If you don't use one drop of water, twenty-eight and twenty-eight is what? How much? Come on. All right, all right. Seventy, how much? Fifty-six, Art Woodson, all right, fifty-six. Listen, fifty-six. Each resident, if you have a water account, you pay fifty-six dollars. You know what the term is for lawsuit? That's one thing. And you know who in control of that? The legislators, the council. Do away with that. That's the start. As far as the KWA, let's just tell you some agreements, agreements. Nothing we can do about the agreement. It would make it, it may heal or not, but it's agreement. Unless the other partner agrees to change the agreement, the agreement is where it is. But we can start knowing by saying, "And you know what? How is it that we used to sail water, now we buy water? The city of Flint used to sail water, and now we buy water? Tell me to make sense of that. That's because they had bad legislators, bad council persons. They caused this problem, and now I'm here trying to, he was out there.
Okay, so now we're gonna switch over to the last topic before we get to the crowd, the audience questions. So the last topic is we were gonna have safety rule with that, and y'all, y'all think we're about, okay. The last, the last topic is that's a funny. Community benefits agreement. And the definition of the community benefits agreement, or the CDA, is a legal binding contract between developers and community groups that ensures local residents receive specific benefits from a large development project. These benefits can include not only affordable projects, environmental practices, and funding from community programs. In other words, which are the benefits? So, first question is, sitting around ensuring we move benefits. If a company wants to invest in such a board and seeks tax breaks or other incentives, would it require a community benefits agreement, and what specific benefits would require us or residents?
Affordable housing. And to be honest, we gonna have to do some real negotiation because I'm really not for businesses that hasn't got a tax. My understanding of a real good business, that the business plan that didn't require a tax, it would be very nice if slink could attract some businesses that didn't require a tax. But my main concern would be neither the pain as far as creating affordable housing home repairs for the residents of slink and controlling our streets for these states. But we really, really need to concentrate on rebuilding our city creating some kind of education or something to where our future kids can come up in the city. Right now, I really don't, I really don't see our kids possibly, you know, it's expanding where your offspring's supposed to do better than you. I really don't see a great life for our great family. And I really would love to see a brighter future for our citizens. So we gotta rebuild our city. We gotta get our kids up and rolling. Well, again, Councilwoman Tiny Burns, thank you for the community benefit agreement that you've been pushing. Thank you. And I think they ought to give something back to the community if they want tax breaks. Now, mind you, if they don't get a tax break here, they gonna go somewhere else to get one. Y'all believe in that? Well, here to be strong, hold, say, "Well, we ain't gonna give you nothing good. I'll go right outside to the borders to Burke, go to the Delphi, the GM plant down there, I'll go to Grandland, I'll go to Land College Hill." So you have to be reasonable when you ask for the community agreement. And I think that was the issue that with Ashley Capital. They did everything, then they want to backtrack and say, "This is what we want." Too late. The train has done the station. But upcoming, we should be able to negotiate with businesses, corporations. I'm not talking about the mom and pop business, but corporations see what they have, what we offer, what they have on the table. If you're that corporation, uh, pay all the tuition for every child in the city of Flint, I'm sorry, we're not gonna do it. But there's some things that they can do, and I think Councilwoman Burns and three other lifeline council persons are trying to hash and work it out, the community benefit agreement. This is a half years ago, and it did happen years ago. We would, that's when we had a strong apology, you know, we doing nothing unless you get it. That's when Flint was strong. We had the money, broke it. Let's save that for our commissioner, General People Law, your time. All right. That was a station, uh, is my time, I can say that. Uh, so that, you know, community benefit agreement, thank you, Councilperson Barnes. Thank you, our mission for pushing this.
Okay, so that's the one more before we get to the audience questions, and which one do I think? Here we go, this one is sitting around enforcing accountability. How can you assure the corporations and developers, follow up with?